I'll call this meeting in order with Bennington Select Board, January 13th, 2014, Bennington Fire Facility. Time is 6:00 PM. If you please rise and join with me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first, next item on the agenda are the minutes from December 16th, 2013.
I will let those be accepted as printed.
Second map?
We have a second. Any discussion on the minutes from December 16th? And Justin was absent at that one. So, all in favor? And at 6:04, against none, abstain, one. The next set of minutes are from January 4th. That was our first budget meeting.
I will let they be accepted with one correction, and that's on line 115. I think it was Paul Doucette who gave the brief history on the dogs, not Joe.
You're probably right, Sharon.
Yeah.
So, just what the...
Well, you know, I'm not sure about that. I did, I did pipe up. I told them how we brought the dog into the schools and, uh...
Yeah, but not about the bites and the...
Oh, no, no, that's right. The history.
All that kind of stuff.
That's a good correction.
Okay.
Paul Doucette and Joe Krasik did, I guess.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? And that is unanimous? Okay. Next item of the warrants, and we'll start with John, down at your end today.
I don't have any question.
Justin?
I have nothing, Joe.
Jim?
No, sir.
Tom?
I'm comfortable.
All right? Sharon?
Wow. Um, I have just a couple of things. On the very first page, down, uh, it's that, it looks like VDP Industries, the sludge rollers, is that for the water treatment plant?
I'm sorry, where are you, Sharon?
Um, it's 305-884.
Six from the bottom.
I was just wondering if that was an anticipated expense, or if that was something that...
No, that, that's anticipated. Uh, it's a repair and maintenance supply for the sludge press.
Okay. Um, and then on page eight, eight of 15, um, it's 305-928. It's for Hatch Company. It's a stream and current meter.
Yeah, that's our water filtration plant operation. Hack Company is one of the contractors we deal with for calibrating meters, replacing meters, uh, at the water filtration plant.
Okay. And I think the last one I have is on page 10. It's the MSK Engineering. I thought the design on that bridge had already been done.
No, this is the, uh, this is the design work, uh, for, uh, the water line that we swat the hang from the bridge. We had to do some preliminary work, and I think I've provided you with, with a layout of what, what the cost would be based on that design.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, uh, yeah, what's a Kosher Drive streetscape on page 13? It's URS Corporation. Do we have a streetscape on Kosher Drive?
Kosher Drive streetscape?
That's the grant, right?
Yes.
The consultant for the grant.
Okay.
The designer.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are citizens. Do we have any citizens out there? Bob, you want to come up? Please sit down at the end, and, uh, if you will, state your name and who you're representing, and, uh...
I'm Robert J. Reynolds of Bennington, taxpayer, and what have you. I'm here tonight to try to, uh, use thee on something. You have, uh, other ways to go, and this particular thing, we're talking about the big expansion of Southern Vermont College water supply. Also Crescent Boulevard, which has been, uh, like that for many years. There is a way, uh, we're talking billions on this. We could be doing it in a different way. We have what's called the Stratton Stream up off by the White Chapel, right off the White Chapel Road there. This stream is fed from, uh, it's a, a, a stream that comes right out of the rocks up there, uh, many years ago, before the Korean War. Sal Sacangelo was there on the board at that time. He did make a, uh, up to the White Rock Springs. He did go with me up there. But the war came along, things kinda petered out. Another time, they select, uh, the, uh, town manager before Stewart. He was very interested in it. The other thing was a second place where we could, uh, is the Lake Hancock, better known to the fishermen as Sucker Pond. There is another place, the pipes are already coming down the mountain. All we need is to build another, uh, other where's, uh, one with the capacity enough to build, that will build the pressure up to take care of, like on Crescent Boulevard. This other one, Stratton Stream, has never been failed. It's fed from this, uh, White Rock Springs. I have a map here, which shows location. I have marked them on the map.
Pass it right down to Joe.
Yep.
That is within ease, can be piped. You'd have to build a, uh, it'd be a small container, uh, to pipe the springs into it. From there, the force of gravity would be taking care of that, bringing it into the big unit we have on Chapel Road for water already. This one we have to pump from Morgan Springs up to that one. This we wouldn't have to do anymore. This water from the, uh, springs area, and I'll tell you, that water's good. Uh, I've taken many scouts up there on, uh, up different hikes, and it was always an enjoyable thing to take a swig out of that, uh, White Rock Springs. Now, uh, I feel we can, this should be looked into a little bit, different ways. I know this is, uh, our town manager ain't gonna like this here, because I think he's already sold on this other method. But I think we're, if you had a bad sickness, and the one doctor told you, well, uh, one thing, we're thinking it over, usually you'll take another, uh, opinion on it. I think on this, with the amount of millions we are looking at, we should look at first Crescent Boulevard. Let the college take care of themselves. Now, a private citizen, he built a new home. There was a pipeline going by. The town's not gonna pay for that pipeline going in. They have to take care of that pipeline and the sewage. Uh, here we have, uh, it looks, uh, like we should take care of Bennington, which is Crescent Boulevard, which can be done between these two locations. This other one I have on the map here, Sucker Pond. But that primary one, I think, is Stratton Stream. That's, uh, the one that comes right down back of the White Chapel Cemetery. If you ever walked out back there a little ways, you'll see the stream is there. That stream then goes on down through. At one time, Gilbert Madison had a swimming pool that was never empty. Stratton, uh, Stream fed that pool. Gilbert stood and I were here. But anyways, these are something I wanted to bring before the board. And then I have one other thing. All of you have a regular job. You have a steady income coming in. There's many of the retired people out in our locality that are not as fortunate. A lot of them are living on a very, very slim diet and everything, so they can pay their taxes. All right, we have gone up on the water sewer setup. Look at how many times we've kept raising that up. Well, we can only raise so far. The taxpayers' pockets are getting empty. Then, uh, the retirees, federal and military, cost of living for their raise is one to 1.5, 1, uh, 1 and 1 and 1/2 percent. I see here in the paper here, the town, the town budget, we have, uh, 2.5 percent. I'd say, with the economy the way it is, I think the Select Board should go back to the table and look at the figures that others are receiving. And then, I think a 1% raise would be a darn big one, when you figure in our economy. So, I hope I didn't anger anybody here tonight.
Bob, let me ask you a couple of questions. Let's go back to the water, and I, I know Stratton Brook, and I know Gilbert Madison's hole in the ground. I swam in it as a kid.
Thank you. Let me present my case.
Yeah, but, Robert, let me ask you. I mean, I hear your solution, but we do need, even if we were to go that way, we still need another large storage tank. I don't hear where your proposal would give the pressure to the hospital that we need. Uh, if Southern Vermont hooks on here, that's another paying customer, that revenue will be coming into the, the water fund that's not coming in right now. I don't know what their usage would be, but I estimate it would probably be considerable over the course of a year, and they would be paying water rates that they're not doing right now. Uh, and, and I'm not sure about if that would raise the pressure in Jefferson Heights and Crescent Boulevard, uh, by putting another tank up on, on Chapel Road.
Unfortunately, it would not. And that's one, that's one of the problems. The, the system that we had, I mean, we, we used to use Sucker Pond for Lake Hancock for our water supply. We discontinued that when the state of Vermont was prepared to mandate that we had to build a water filtration plant before that water could come into the system. We all know, we just went through a $7 million upgrade on our existing water filtration plant, and if we were to attempt to tap into the Stratton Stream, uh, however good a source it might be, you're gonna have to find a way to get that either to the existing plant or build a new plant to treat it, because the state of Vermont will not allow you to feed untreated water into your water system. So, you, you, you may not, you may not have to improve the amount of water that you need, but you're gonna have to spend several millions of dollars to build water filtration facilities to incorporate both those facilities into the existing system.
And it's not that our current sources are not producing enough water. Our current sources have plenty of water. We have excess water.
It's, it's, it's the elevational situation that we have in the system. All of our water comes off of Woodford down into the bowl, and in order to pump it up, uh, into Crescent Boulevard, into Jefferson Heights, uh, we need an additional tank. And it's long been, it's not, it's not just my tenure here. It goes way back to, uh, when Dufrane Henry and DuBois and King were studying the water system back when the 2010 report was being prepared. There was discussion about a water tank up on the easterly slopes of Mount Anthony as a necessary, uh, product for our system.
And as far as the pressure goes in those neighborhoods, we've been mandated by the state that we must complete that at least by 2017, is that correct?
We have to begin addressing it by 2017. I'm sure they, if we were, if we were taking positive steps in that direction, we would have some additional time. But what makes this critical now is that Southern Vermont College is on the list with a very high priority rating. Uh, our project, as much as the state says we need it, would not receive the same number of points. Uh, so by partnering with Southern Vermont College, we gained their place on the funding priority list, which is at the top. And that allows us to get the available dollars at a 3% interest rate, uh, which is a very low rate considering today, and, uh, we don't have to start paying on this project until two years after it's completed.
So, it could be 2020 or 2019?
Well, I, I think the project will go relatively quickly, but we're probably looking at fiscal year 2018 before we have to start budgeting for these payments.
Yep.
It gives the board a, a ton of time to, to understand what the impacts of adding the college's properties to our system are. It gives the board a lot of time to understand what its reserves are, what its depreciation cost is, and as I indicated in the article I wrote for the banner, it could be as simple as simply reducing the amount of spend on projects and, and paying for the entire bond without raising rates at all.
Yep.
It could be that simple. I don't necessarily would be there, sitting there recommending that, but that's... So, I, I mean, Bob may be correct about the Stratton Stream. Uh, he certainly is correct about Sucker Pond. It was our water system. Uh, but we had to discontinue it because we couldn't afford to build a filtration plant to treat the water.
Can you ask Terry to take a look and see if there's any history on Stratton Stream ideas? If there were previous managers that looked into it, there might be some documentation floating around in the cellar somewhere that we could just take a look at.
We don't have a water problem in our cellar, so, but it might be there. We'll see.
All right, thanks.
Bob, it was good, it's good to bring that up, because, you know, it, it's nothing wrong with us relooking things that are brought up, and, uh, well, there are some things, uh, one of the main things, as Stuart said, that regulations today, we can't use the water unless it goes through a filtration plant, and we'd have to do something to get that to our current filtration plant, which was costing us money or whatever. Uh, you know, the days of bending down and sucking it out of the river, you can't do that anymore, you know?
Now, Morgan Springs.
Right.
That water's being piped to that tank that's up on the White, uh, uh...
Chapel Road.
The Chapel Road there, that big tank up there.
Right.
If you look at the map, the proximity of that tank to the White Rock Springs is gonna make you start thinking.
Okay.
Now, we, any project as big as this, I don't know how much engineering has been done on this already, or what the real cost is gonna be, but I think when you figure, uh, you're looking at 3 million, I think you're gonna come up better, like 5 million.
Okay.
That's what my opinion and what I've looked over the territory you're gonna be in. The other thing, the water that's gonna supply Southern Vermont College, are they gonna, whether you're drilling or you're taking it from our supply here in the town?
We're taking it from the town system and pumping it up to the new tank.
And pumping it up.
Yep.
So, we're paying for another pump, which could be done without that. As far as, uh, that water from the White Rock Springs is about as pure as you can get, and you could have it tested, and that, uh, it'd make a good hike. Sal Sacangelo, he enjoyed that hike the day I went with him. And, uh, if you knew Sal like I know him, uh, if he had an opinion, he made it.
Yeah.
And his opinion was that that was gonna be a great source sometime.
Okay.
And, but it's something to look into. I'm gonna leave the map there with you, and I'll pick it up from Joe later on.
Okay.
Uh, they'll give you a chance to look, do a little bit of measuring, look at, you got your elevation heights to give you what pressure can do. You're looking at costs afterwards. It's, you've got a lot of things you're gonna take in consideration when you get into a big project like this. And I don't know how far they have gone into this, but I'd say, from looking at the figures and having done, I, I used to take care of the college, so I know that land up there good. And, uh, I think we, we could run into problems there. But this will give you a, a second chance, and I thank you for letting me sit here and bother yous for a little bit tonight.
You're never bothered, Bob. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other, any other citizens out there like to speak? Yes, sir, please. If you'll just state your name, please, and...
My name is Fred Gillett. Living Bennington on Justin Avenue. I've had this conversation a few times with Mr. Hurd over the past four or five years. Um, and this year, it got a little bit scary one morning for my wife. Our drive, our, I shouldn't say drive, our roadway, Justin Avenue, it's up off of Bradley Drive, Furnace Brook area. It's Mr. Jelly's housing development up there. We've been up there, I'm gonna think, roughly eight years now, maybe going on nine, and I understood that when we first arrived, it was dirt, and they weren't, the town was not gonna maintain it. But when it got blacktop, the town was going to take it over. Now, I understand, excuse me, there's been some issues that they have been working together to resolve, but I've driven on these roads a lot when I was a police officer here, so I can tell the good ones and the bad ones. And Justin Ave is a good road. It meets the requirements, it's flat, it's got a little grade, the manhole cover is flush. It's one of the ones that he didn't have to, uh, raise up. And I, and I can't understand why they can't plow it and sand it. Uh, I used to take care of it with a little tractor, and my other neighbor, Mr. Gothier, and I used to do it, but it took us maybe an hour and a half, because they were just a little four-wheeler. Um, and I guess I'm trying to get some resolution, because it's about 100 bucks when they plow and sand it.
Okay. Stuart, do we own the road, or has it been turned over to us?
Uh, we don't own any of the roads in that development. We began to maintain Bradley Drive because we were using it as a cutthroat. It connects, uh, the Chapel Road and Furnace Brook Road. Uh, it was safer for us to do it that way than to turn around at the end of Furnace Brook.
With the trucks? With the sand trucks? Plow trucks?
Plow and sand that, that, that portion of the road. We do not go into any of the cul-de-sacs or the dead-end streets off of that road in that development at this time. I can tell you, we came very, very close to having all the necessary documentation in place this past summer. But, uh, other things happened, and, uh, we were not able to, uh, or Mr. Jelly was not able to formalize the application process to have us take over his roads. Uh, he has done quite a bit of work up there after our, um, inspection this summer. I tend to agree with Fred. I think Bradley Drive, uh, Justin Avenue is in fine shape. Uh, there's not a lot of work that needs to be done there, some drainage work perhaps in some of the areas that may have already been done. But there is a formal process for laying out and accepting a highway. Uh, it requires a public hearing, it requires, uh, documentation, it requires deed, deeds to be addressed, and we just haven't gotten to that point. And, and I'm not, I'm not pointing a finger at Mr. Jelly. He's got a lot of things on his plates. Uh, it's been a long and tough road for him to try to move in this direction, uh, because there have been constant issues, but as the development ages, those issues don't go away.
Right.
So, we're, we're hoping to be able to bring this to you in the spring, and then we will, we will take over and maintain the water lines, the sewer lines, and all of the roads in that development.
So, it's still a work in progress, then?
Absolutely.
It's not something dead? You know, still working in it?
Mr. Jelly doesn't even plow the road?
No, he does not.
Is he supposed to?
I don't believe so. I think before I was, before I moved in up there, there was an association, but it dissolved because the people thought they were paying their taxes. There's no reason why the town shouldn't take the road over and maintain it, plow it, whatever. That was a little bit before my time, but when we built up there, there was no association that I'm aware of. And I've spoke with everybody on the cul-de-sac, with the exception of one, who's very difficult to track down. She's a tough bird, so to speak. Nice lady, but just tough to track down. And I talked to Mr. Maroney, who doesn't have any issues, willing to talk. He couldn't come tonight. He was going to, but he has a sick child at home that he's taking care of, um, with right-of-ways if they need it for drainage or any of that. He'd be more than glad to talk with people and work out whatever they need. I think Mr. Gothier would say the same thing. Um, I had a chat Saturday afternoon with Ellen, and her last name escapes me, but she was gonna try to make it here also tonight, but she had to take her son back to college today, so I don't know if she was gonna get here. But we're all just concerned, because like the other morning, my wife gets up and she's out of the house between 2:30 and 3:00 in the morning, and we had that little two- or three-inch blurb, and it got warm and it got icy. And she kinda like slid down the road. Is what it is. I mean, we didn't get it plowed or sanded. I guess I'm probably the fault for that one, but it's just starting to get expensive. And to be honest with you, I really don't feel like being out there in that little tractor in the cold anymore. Kinda liking the warmth.
Do you think you can get, make it to, uh, March, April? Is that when, what's the timeframe?
Uh, I, I, it really, it, it all depends on, on when the petition is, is received. Uh, as you know, Tom, there's a, once the petition is received, there's a 30-day hearing notice, there's a site visit required of the board. Um, RJ and I have been working with, uh, Mr. Jelly to try to make sure that everything is up to snuff when we come to that point, so that we're not finding additional problems. And I think he's been working in that direction. We just weren't able to culminate the whole process this fall.
Maybe you could just talk with Skeeter?
I did. I talked with him today, just to make sure I had all my ducks sort of in a row. I know he had the, uh, manhole cover issue that he's trying to raise, but I guess the blacktop plant closed up before he could get that done.
That's one of the problems, yes.
But they're all cut and ready to go in the spring. I can attest to that. I drive over them every day. Um, but I guess that's where we're at. I mean, you know, if we have to put up with it for the rest of the winter, it's been long enough now, so a couple more months won't be bad, but I, I just don't know what our next step would be from here.
Well, it's not that the town does not want to take them. Uh, there is a process, and, and I know we've made some site visits out on the west end since I've been on the board, and, uh, it's, it's the process we've gotta do to, uh, to make sure that we are consistent in how we, we do all these things, so...
Lower Lane part of that as well?
Is what?
Lower Lane is, but that's dirt right now.
That's dirt.
That was understood, that it wouldn't be done until it was blacktop.
Right.
And I think that was, I might, hope I'm not speaking out of term, but I think that's ready to be done this spring.
It is. So, that's about, between those two cul-de-sacs, there's about a dozen properties.
Approximately, yeah. There's five on ours, and maybe six up there. I mean, it's done. There's no more houses to go in.
Okay.
So, why wouldn't this be Mr. Jelly's responsibility right now, as it is? It's a...
Well, it kind of is.
Without, without knowing, he may have conveyed, uh, his interest in the roadways to the association. Uh, this association sounds like it's had some issues, uh, and until the association or Mr. Jelly transfers title to that roadway, uh, then the town doesn't have any responsibility.
Right, but why wouldn't he have a responsibility? Essentially, it's his long, long driveway, right?
Well, he, he is, he is the developer. Normally, that, that, that kind of effort would be turned over to an association once so many lots were sold and, and developed. And in this particular case, I think Fred is right, that the association struggled at the very beginning, fell apart, and so it's really left to the property owners on those streets to contract for their maintenance.
You know, and I understand that, and I, you know, I'm good with it, but I'm just trying to maybe push the issue along a little bit, and...
Have you tried, like, going to the neighbors and saying, hey, you know, maybe if we chip in 50 bucks, we can get somebody to plow and sand for the, you know, get a private contractor in there?
They do on occasion, you know, when they...
I mean, at least after a storm, so, you know.
Yeah. Usually, we work it out, but most of the time, I just go ahead and do it, and...
I mean, it sounds like it's in Mr. Jelly's court right now, and there's, we can't do anything until he...
As I recall, there's a pretty good pitch up there, so it's worth...
Until he moves forward.
The best thing is have the town take over the roadways, and it gets to the specs, which I think we're pretty close to. It's gonna happen.
This seems to be the intent of everybody, wants to make it happen. It's best for everybody concerned, so, uh, it's on our radar. We'll make sure and move up with it, and I know if RJ's working with it, he's got him identified with Mr. Jelly, and, uh, soon as spring gets here.
Yeah, Mr. Jelly knows exactly what he needs to do, and, and we're, once those things are done, and the, uh, the appropriate petition is made, and the deed submitted, it'll be before you folks.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for making the...
Any other citizens like to come forward? Joanne? And please identify yourself.
Thank you. It's Joanne, Erin, House Director at the Chamber of Commerce here in Bennington. Very short, very sweet. I just want to take this opportunity in a public forum to personally thank the Vermont Veterans Home and the board and everyone involved who, um, helped us sort through our difficulty at our site, and who stood up and very generously helped out, so that now we are able to begin the renovations and get our building back into its intact shape and hopefully serving the public. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We saw it happen, Joanne. It was one of those things, but we learned a lot from, uh, the town. For those who don't know, there, there was a sewer back up near the Deer Park that, uh, kinda just progressed until it got into the Chamber's building.
Yeah, we have the luck of...
And belongs to the Veterans Home, and the trustees moved forward to, uh, take on a, a large chunk of the funds that was required to repair that and put the chamber back in, so...
Yeah, it really made all the difference. Yeah, it really made all the difference.
So now we understand where that is, and we'll make sure that's cleaned out every year so that it doesn't happen again.
I think the Veterans Home is a wonderful partner in that, and you know, we really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Joanne.
Do you want to plug your annual meeting?
Oh, yeah. If you're a Chamber member, put this date on your calendar. It is January 24th, from 5:30 to about 8:30. You want to come up to the Mount Anthony Country Club for the Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner meeting. It's going to be a really nice evening. We give out awards and we have a lot of fun. And we look forward to, oh, we do do a very short business meeting, and hopefully all of our members will be there. Thank you.
Well, let me plug the Chamber then, seeing how we got to plug in each other here.
Is that a pun?
I want to thank the Chamber for allowing some talented artists that we have in the Veterans Home to display their art at the Welcome Center.
We're happy to do that.
And we have some real talented artists there. If you haven't seen or had the opportunity to go up and see some of the art that is displayed at the Welcome Center, I encourage you to go up and see it. We're part of the Vermont Art Exchange there, are members, and we're really proud of the work they do, so.
Well, thanks. You do have, you do have some very talented artists. It's true. And we're delighted to be able to give them a venue to showcase their talents.
Thank you, Joanne.
Sure.
Okay, any other citizens? I don't see any, so. Next thing is Economic Development Partners update. Mike?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike.
So, a couple different things you have in your packet, and I'll get to questions relatively quickly. Just to give a breakdown for the public, the Bennington Economic Development Partners meet monthly. There's probably anywhere from 15 to 25 people that attend regularly from all different organizations. And within the past year, approximately last May, the town informally appointed them as the group that would be charged with implementing strategies from the Strategic Planning Document. So what I presented to you today and you have in your packets is a brief breakdown of the economic development plan, the goals and objectives. There's three goals, and within each one of those goals, there's a number of objectives. And then I did a quick highlight sheet, and so just for the public, and then we can get into any questions you have. The things that come on the highlight sheet, and I'll just list the strategies, an accountability framework, which was done by appointing the group to oversee it, bringing college students into the downtown, the MAU Math Pilot Program, the Select Board and School Board meetings that have been occurring, downtown Wi-Fi, the Ninja Bike Path, the Marketing and Recruitment Plan, workforce development and training at the primary education level, local internship programs, surveying existing and emerging and departing businesses, researching growth industries, the cultural plan, the housing plan, and identifying and developing options for underutilized and vacant properties and a full-service marketing plan. These are just the ones that have seen the most traction as of yet. There's a number of other strategies that are either in the works or we just will be coming up as we complete different projects. So I'm happy to open it to any questions. You also have the matrix list that really outlines in more detail the different strategies and where we are on each strategy.
I think it would be helpful, Mike, for the audience out there, just for you to go over Goal 1, 2, and 3, the goals of the economic strategy.
Yep. So Goal 1...
Are these three goals in priority?
They are. I don't believe they're in priority. And maybe Dan can confirm that for me, but... I'll, let me get to the full version so I can read it in its entirety. Goal 1, to increase job opportunities and the competitiveness and quality of the workforce to meet the needs of existing and new businesses in Bennington. Goal 2, to develop and maintain critical infrastructure necessary to promote economic vitality. And Goal 3, to increase economic activity and improve the quality of life in Bennington by focusing on local businesses and existing assets.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Mike?
Yeah, go for it.
John?
After you.
Just come on down.
John?
So just looking at this, I mean, we had a few strategies listed as complete and ongoing as well. Attracting the college students to the downtown area, support the MAU Math Pilot Program, and conduct joint Select Board and School Board meetings. They says "complete" on a few of those. Can you kind of elaborate on what's been done just to kind of...
Sure. So, and the reason they say "complete" and "ongoing" is that they're projects that will continue until a date we decide they shouldn't continue anymore. But in terms of the group shepherding these different strategies forward, we felt that the group's official role in the process had come to some type of completion. The attracting students to downtown will be ongoing. I know John from the Better Bennington Corporation worked hard this year, but is planning to continue a lot of what he implemented originally. And they include things like a college night, a college dinner night. We started a student discount program for businesses. So there's about 40 different businesses that now offer student discounts to all college students. Prior to that, they used to have different discounts with different colleges, so we now have a uniformed discount program. They include the, one of the First Fridays now. The last one was designated as the College First Friday Night. And that, I think, will continue as well. And there's a number of others in terms of ideas or thoughts in terms of how do we continue to bring students into the downtown. I think the biggest challenge that we've noticed as a group is that we can want them to come into the downtown as much as they can, but we really have to identify what are the things they're looking for, and it's usually things that they can't find on campus. And so it's variety in food, it's variety in retail. And those are the things that will bring our students into the downtown.
But we've also worked with Green Mountain, and they've increased the number of bus on the weekends, if I remember right. So we have transportation going up there for the students to come down. They were major players in the downtown cleanup last year. The college students were, both from Bennington College and Southern Vermont College are very active. Actually, they ran the program. It was very, very good, so.
I would also say the one thing that came out of that that doesn't show up on here is we now have all the colleges, almost all of them, with probably the exception of the New England Baptist College, which just opened, all talking together and sharing the information. And so we've had all the colleges around the table a number of different times. So when we're doing, and when we did welcome back gift baskets for all the new incoming students with downtown and merchant information. So again, they're all around the table having the conversation, whether it's transportation or what else.
Right, and just so you know, this isn't necessarily a question for me, but I'd like everyone to hear what you guys are doing so they understand the amount of effort that's going into this, so they don't just hear they had this plan and nothing actually happened, because I know there's been a lot of effort. So it's good to hear the different activities that are going on.
There's a, there is a task force that meets, and they've agreed to continue meeting each year. And it'll meet temporarily between the months of May and August till the students come back. And it's administrators from each college that will get together for those four or five months to say, okay, this year as we head into the school year, what are the different projects we want to have to promote it? Just to go down through your list here, so the other one is the Math Pilot Program. Again, Mount Anthony has set up a program that is designed around using real-world math projects to teach math in the classroom and out of the classroom. And I know that they are looking at additional programs, including English and science, to expand those efforts into. And so they're very focused projects that the group meets to discuss how does math work in a number of different settings and environments. And then I think a lot of us and a lot of people have seen recently just the ongoing work that the Select Board's been doing with the School Board in regards to regular communication, strategy meetings, and communication meetings. So I think we're on the right track with those three.
Yeah, really, I mean, this is your time to shine, I guess, and so everyone wants to know, and that's why I just...
I think, no, I think that's great. Thank you.
Just to jump in for discussion moving is, you know, economic development just doesn't happen by accident. And you found out in the first, before this plan was even adopted, how difficult it is. As you've been in the six, seven-months program now, where are the resources, or where are the hurdles, where are the obstacles? Where can the board step in to assist the partners to make some of these big-picture items start to take form?
Good question, and probably one that probably takes a little more coordination to bring it to this level. But I can tell you, looking back at the time that I've been here, my focus, and this comes from talking with a lot of different people, is that from the municipality's perspective, we really need to be focused on creating the environment for economic development to occur. So when we start talking about different infrastructure projects or incentive programs, before we can go and recruit a specific business or entity or organization, we have to make sure that those businesses that are looking to either start a new location or start brand-new find Bennington attractive for different aspects or assets that it offers. And so the biggest thing is creating that environment for the economic development to occur. The biggest thing I think that we struggle with is finding investors and developers. You know, we have a number of different projects, I think we all do around the table, that we think would be great projects to move forward. And the biggest struggle for us will be finding those people who initially want to invest in those projects. And you asked about just different downtown incentive programs. And each one of those comes with a private investor. You know, there was somebody who had a project in mind who wanted to put some money into the project. And that opens the gates for additional funding, whether it's through tax incentives or other programs to filter in.
Just seems like the clarion call has got to be, Bennington is open for investment. Because we can do all of the planning and do all the discussion, but you've got to have the dollars that are going to follow. And it can't all be tax stabilizations and all of those things, because pretty much every town can do it. Somehow, we've got to get, and I think you're talking to the point of making the infrastructure, the assets known to the world. But I think somehow we've got to get that world of investors, be wherever they are, to recognize that this is a great place to invest in.
Yeah, and I think the question that comes up, and I think we all have the answer for ourselves, is why would I choose Bennington? You know, if I'm looking across the country to invest in terms of starting a business, what is so unique about Bennington? And I think we could probably go around the table and all share our own perspective, which is usually pretty, their personal reasons. You know, family, friends, and other experiences. But from a business-conscious decision, what is it that is unique about Bennington and that we offer here that they can't get anywhere else?
And that's important, though. We got to take a show of that, because if you're watching our networks that come out of the Capitol District right now, New York State is, have these empowerment zones where you go in there and develop. You have 10 years free taxes in those areas. Now, New York may be able to afford it with their deficit to do that, but Vermont being as small as it is, we can't really establish those zones. However, we have done some things that I don't think gets advertised enough. We were one of the second, I think we were the second community in the state to be granted a development... Dan, help me out. What's that? The... Growth Center. Growth Center. We have done a lot of work with our planning commission and our town staff to identify areas that are already permitted for certain things to come in, and that's a big plus. Shields Drive, I think, is pretty much all permitted. So any investor wants to get in there, they don't have to go through the Act 250 and the other things to make that happen. And I think other areas that we've identified for housing as well as industrial, that those are things we've got to advertise and sell those positive things we have. You know, the quality of life is one that always comes up. But in order to have quality of life, you've got to have a good job also in order to be able to maintain that quality of life, so.
There was a book I was reading, the quote in the opening page of the book was, "I never made a business decision based on a tax incentive." And, you know, they're nice to have, and I'll take them if they're offered.
But they go away.
But, right, and that's not the decision I make in terms of how to structure my business. But I will say, my hope is that, and I think we've done this, and I hope you feel the same way, is that as we look across the entire state, I think personally, Bennington is probably one of the shining stars in terms of progressive movement, forward-thinking. We certainly come with our own challenges like any community, but I think we are seen as putting a lot of projects on the map and moving a lot of things forward. And, you know, I hear comments about our Ninja Bike Path, and a lot of people think, you know, how can we get that to move forward? You guys are, you know, how did you, how were you able to get all the players around the table and make this happen? And so I, you know, for me, as we begin to look at the types of businesses we want to encourage to come into the community, and that is occurring right now, it's probably going to be those businesses that are already looking at Vermont as an opportunity. They see some benefit from being in this state, whether it represents their social or personal preferences. But at the same time, there's something that's drawing them to Vermont. And my hope is that as we begin to do that, we're trying to encourage them that Bennington is a great place to do business in the state, you know, not always in the northern.
Mike, when you're hearing from places that aren't interested in coming here, what's some of the reasons they're citing?
The reasons they are, they are interested?
They aren't. Places that are not. What are they telling us?
Transportation, big one. Housing somewhat, but what we found, because we were doing, we've been doing this housing study, is that they'll find housing. It may not be in Bennington, but they'll find housing. And so when we were talking with people who were doing business recruiting, and we said, you know, how critical is housing in terms of your ability to recruit people? In terms of, they didn't see it as a big need at the moment, and that was because they've been able to find housing, but it may end up being in Manchester, Williamstown, or Housick Falls or elsewhere. So I think if we're looking to create that residential community, we've got some work to do. But in terms of businesses deciding to come here, transportation, transportation, everybody always says taxes, but I, again, I think that's kind of anecdotal. And finding qualified workforce, we hear that a lot as well.
One of the other big issues that we're facing, I know we have a lot of land that we can build on and is zoned as industrial, but we don't have a lot of actual buildings. And right now, because of the economic downturn, it's cheaper to go find an empty building somewhere than it is to put a shovel in the dirt. So with us not having that, that kind of completely removes us from the game of bringing in new business, because they're going to look, they're going to find an old building that was used at one point. They're not going to put a shovel in the dirt. And so with my time here, I've seen a number of different projects, major projects, Bridgewater, whatever, or now the SBC project that's coming through for millions of dollars. And it's going to help our infrastructure. It's going to buy us another client, or a customer. Have we looked at the amount of money that we might be able to offer someone to come in and help build a new facility? Because if they offer 50 jobs, then we offer them X as an incentive. Not a tax incentive, but here's this much money that we're going to put towards this, and some kind of thinking like that. I don't know if it's feasible, I don't know what the dollar spread would be for 50 employees, 100 employees, but what you'd have is 50 people looking to buy houses, 50 people looking to buy dinner. You know, and so looking at those type of things might be beneficial in terms of actually increasing the potential of having people come here.
Well, and I, the struggle becomes, because I think we all want to do that, and certainly the board can discuss different incentive programs that it'd like to consider, and I'm happy to have that conversation. You know, as Joe said, we're, as a town, we're trying to put ourselves in competition with a state like New York State. So the ability for us as a community to generate the type of support or funding that the entire state of New York is generating is very difficult. You know, so I agree with that. I think we should be always looking at new incentives for different businesses. But that becomes the struggle, whether it's tax incentive, whether it's straight financial funding. You know, I think there are a couple different opportunities that we can take into consideration. But there are a whole host of statewide programs too. And so I, part of what we do in working with them is identifying what other funding sources, you know, whether it's an angel investor, whether it's a Vermont Economic Development Grant, whether it's a Community Development Block Grant, there's a lot out there. And so being able to maneuver through those systems and know what works, and that's part of what I do, but also what BCIC does as well. You asked, what else is hindering business from coming here? I mean, when we start talking about national or international companies, whether it's retail, food, and beverage, and so on, density, population density is the number one thing that when I look at, okay, how do we, how do we position ourselves to be a location that XYZ company sees us as being attractive? It's purely population density.
Well, you showed us a study in the past. I know myself and John, you and Bill Colvin had a chance to look at some of these data. There was definitely some areas identified within... There was definitely some areas identified within that, and I can't, it escapes me where to cite where it came from.
Well, retail is the biggest one.
Very reputable information, but those are areas that have already been identified of where we can expand, and it breaks it down to where the population is within however many-minute drive.
Right.
And there was a lot of opportunities.
Yeah, it's a market.
I mean, a lot of opportunities. It blew my mind.
And it identified food and beverage, it identified retail, identified electronics. Again, part of that is, we see that as a need, but remember, we're a community of 15,000.
Well, this study was actually going out and looking for within a 30-minute drive, 45-minute drive, 60-minute drive.
Right.
We have, you can drive a half hour in almost every single direction, and as long as you're not past that 30-minute drive point, people in the middle have a choice to make. They can go west, or they can come east. And if we have the things here, we can bring them into here to spend their money in Vermont.
And so I think it's really important for us to know where those leakage points are. And, you know, we've, a good example is outdoor recreation in terms of retail. And we've run the spectrum from small to large. You know, when you start talking large, they're wanting a million people in 15 miles, and you're not going to get that.
That's one of the issues with business management, you know, these days, is, you know, when somebody goes into entrepreneurship, whatever, they immediately, I go to conferences sometimes, and they're talking about numbers that have nothing to do with me, you know, when we're talking about investment numbers, or return numbers, and things like that. And one of the benefits I think we have here is you can open a business if you're looking to make a living employing a few people and things like that. And it's one of our strengths, and it's one faction of economic development. When you get into retail development, things like that, people want to see big numbers fast. Unfortunately, that's become the model in a lot of places.
Well, this study actually identified places, the things that would work, maybe if we can get a copy of that out to everybody, so we can take a look at it again. But just segueing into the marketing and recruitment plan, which is key to the success of this whole thing in my mind. But when we look at how we're going to actively go out and market and recruit Bennington, you know, we're not going to get it if we don't ask for it. So we've got to be out there pushing and knocking on doors and really trying to bring some of this stuff in. But there's areas already identified that can be successful here, and that's where to start. And that's where we just, you know, start hammering at home and trying to bring some of these things in here.
You know, one of the things that strikes me as I'm hearing the conversation, there's a term they use in developing an online presence, and it's the competitiveness ranking of different words that are used. And with the whole idea that if you're promoting your business and you're a small business, you're using terms that aren't used by the large companies, because the large companies will always be able to outspend you. And part of what we should, I think, consider down the road is, you know, what do we offer that you can't get somewhere else? And part of, we'll never be able to offer the large population that you can get in a major urban environment, but there's no reason why we can't be a mecca for homegrown business, or a mecca for entrepreneurship, or, and what does it take for us to become that mecca, that place where people want to start businesses? And if we can build that density, that's what builds these businesses. And I'm not disagreeing with you at all, Justin, I agree we need to be able to go out to these businesses and sell the assets that we have.
That's a kind of historical approach in Bennington, though. I mean, with the ChemFab out in North Bennington, you know, those were incubator processes, and frankly, I think that is certainly a part of what we should be looking at, is the incubator approach. You know, what Greg is saying is that, you know, you're going to get the 1 to 2 to 10, if you're lucky, proprietorship operations. And if we're going, looking for additional big companies to relocate here, they're not, they're relocating out of where they're at now, and they're not going to be coming here. So I think the effort really should be to try to get entrepreneurs that are interested in getting some support for a small business and growing it, so that eventually the need or the desire of increasing this, our tax rules, because that's where we've got to get. And it's just not going to happen overnight.
And I think that's where you see the state moving as well, as they start talking broadband across the state. I mean, all that's built around small, locally-owned businesses or entrepreneurial.
Well, the other side of that, though, we can't lose sight of the existing businesses we have here. I mean, we cannot keep losing businesses. We've got to take and figure out ways to keep, give them incentives to want to stay here or not go out. And the small business, I think, is the way to go. I mean, I'm sorry to see the incubator go away over there at ChemFab, because I thought that was working well with BCIC. Understand why they had to do it. But, you know, as some of you know, I went to North Carolina last month, down to Charlotte area, down to Durham area. Vermont is not going to compete with something like North Carolina, just out of the energy prices alone. We can't bring big manufacturing in. When you look at how they're operating down there, and the growth down there is amazing how it's going on in the economy, it scares you. Not that I'd want that for here, but I would just tell you, the big guys are going south. Energy is one of the biggest movers. We haven't tackled that cost yet. We've been lucky with Buzant, we've been lucky with, today, we were lucky with MacMolding in Arlington. I mean, when you get your senators getting contracts in, as they're working with MacMolding as they came here today, and as they did with Buzant, and they've done with other of our folks, that helps us maintain the workforce we have, and allows our employees to have a livable wage down here, and those are the things we've got to make sure we protect.
Well, you know, the mill over on Vermont Avenue is a great example. That was renovated by, you know, a local resident. There's 59 tenants there now after, you know, 20 years, or, you know, it had been empty for 10 years, and then 10 years of development or so, but the anchor tenant, Mays, was sold, and the new owners moved it out of town. You know, that was an anchor tenant that built that building up, because, and it was here because the local resident wanted it here, you know? And that's the kind of thing that, you know, it's a cyclical thing, unfortunately, when things happen, but that allowed that entire building to be renovated one wing at a time. And now it's an incubator for small businesses, as well as a...
And a school.
Yeah, and now it's got the colleges.
College over there, yeah.
Medical offices in there and everything, but also some very affordable space, just in, you know, the old BCIC building still has some good space. But, you know, I think that's true. You know, if we can focus on, and the state does have programs, that building was renovated with some state money, you know, some state aid. But I had, recently, I had a phone call from a customer in Berkshire County who was interested in expanding part of his business into Southern Vermont. It was nice to be able to give him, you know, the story of the economic development partners, and give him one name that he could contact to get, feel for the business community, and not have to chase, you know, his tail all day looking for different people and whatnot, and be able to get, you know, involved. So he wants to expand. But I think, you know, it's a combination of a lot of things. It's a lot of, as Jason used to say, it's bunsingles. You chip, and you hit it, and you stay on it and keep going, and then you have, you look back, and hopefully you see some development.
You know, one of the things you don't, that I hear more now than I never realized until I ended up in the role, is that, you know, when a company decides to move, or grow, or relocate, you know, you see that as, how did they get that to happen, and it happened so quickly? You know, what I hear is, you know, you may see it now, but that took 10 years to put into place, or that took five years to build. And so, you know, it is unfortunately, a slower game than probably we want it to be. But a lot of the big projects that we hear happening across the state have been in the works for 10, 15 years from the first conversation. So I think it's good that we're talking about it, and I think, you know, there's a lot of, in my mind, probably more so than I've seen in the past, positive energy and momentum behind the idea of economic development.
People looking, like this gentleman I talked to was very impressed to hear that there were that many people active in the community that were trying to get things going, will be receptive to, you know, to a new idea.
There are business owners that are on there who have gone through the process, they have firsthand knowledge of what it takes, and there's members on the staff, the town staff, it's a good mix of people that are on that committee.
Anecdotal.
Part of that partnership, educators and everything else.
I know it's anecdotal, and you can't go behind the curtain, but do you have reason to feel optimistic about what is happening?
I always feel optimistic.
I know. Taking that out off the realistic part.
I do, because I feel like there's, again, more of the collaboration occurring, and there's just more interest in the idea of what's a new or an innovative way that we can tackle an age-old problem. And I don't, you know, we're, I think we're being much more proactive than reactive than we have in the past. And I would hope that most people around the table would agree, but, you know, we're going out there, we're identifying businesses, we're identifying developers, there's much more activity going on. I think unfortunately, we've got this momentum going in a time that's really poor for business across the country and around the world, and that's the biggest struggle. But all those conversations are occurring, whether it's at my desk or one of the other partners we have. So I'm optimistic because that's what I see happening. And unfortunately, in the public, you probably don't see all the conversations and discussions that are happening.
When you have these conversations, and I don't know how many times a week, a month, whatever it is, that you either cold-call someone, or you have one of these five-to-10-year projects in the works, the guys that you're discussing this with, but can you ask the one question that is, what do we have to do today to get you in here? It seems like a very cliche salesman-type line, but the bottom line is, what makes it work for them? And if they say, well, I need $50,000, bring that to us. Let's look at it. If it's going to bring, you know, some new company to us, to Bennington, let's consider it. If it means, I don't know, anything, whatever they might need, it'll let us understand ourselves, one, and what we need to start to offer, and then, who knows, maybe we'll get a couple of people in here.
And sometimes it's as easy as there is something very tangible, other times it's not. And so I'm, you know, I usually ask businesses that exist here, why are you here? You know, what was it about Bennington that caused you to want to do business here? And I'll certainly ask that question, and have, but I'll make sure to make it a habit of, what would it take? I'll tell you, the last company I asked, what would it take to get you to Bennington? They said, we want this building right here, which was privately owned. So again, you know...
But who knows?
But there are, you know, they want this lot with this building available for sale. And it's a thriving business. You know, so again, there are things that we have control over and things we don't. Not to say that I'm not following up on that, but those are the types of comments you get sometimes.
In my mind, nothing's too radical for us to hear about. Everything needs to be on the table.
No, and I think that's what I appreciate, is that you're willing to hear that.
Has any companies or any potential businesses had any issues with any regulation that we control here locally that we could change if need be? That's something I would want to hear about the second, the second it came up.
No, not any legitimate concerns. Every business that is truly interested in doing business here is fine going through the process, and I think they find both myself and Dan and Larry more than willing to shepherd them through the process. And I think our, part of our permitting process does exactly what it needs to do, which is weed out some of those people who aren't really serious about doing business, and doing it the right way.
Can you think of anything specific that has came up, though? Anything specific that has came up that you've been made aware of?
The most recent one, and this may not be a great example, it's just fresh in my mind, but there was someone who was struggling with the sign permit application, and, you know, it's not an arduous process, but they were struggling with the process, and both Dan and I were more than willing to work with them through the process. I think the places where you see it work really well, from a partnering perspective, places like working with the Laflams in terms of finding an alternate location, we've been talking with them, I got a call from them today, and so, you know, we've both said, anything we can do from, you know, the permitting code enforcement that doesn't put anybody in danger will certainly help with that process, however we can. And I think the place where, you know, people gave us a lot of tough times upfront, but where you really see it benefit are places like Dollar General. And whether you like the business or don't like the business, you can't but love the building that it ended up being, which is...
I like the Grand List Edition.
Yeah. And, but also, I think that's a great example of how our permitting and code requirements make sure that it doesn't end up looking like a lot of the other ones that you see around the state and around the country. And I haven't heard any complaints regarding the building that was constructed since it was constructed. And I think it does exactly what we want it to do, and helps us keep our downtown looking the way we want to keep it.
Any other questions, Mike?
And Dan could certainly allude to any other issues that he might see come up, because he deals with them on a regular basis.
No, it's a good update, Mike, and as board members suggested, you know, anytime you hear, or you run into a roadblock, bring that to the board. That's what we get elected for, to take on those decisions and everything, incentives or roadblocks we have out there, so we can see if it's something we need to change up.
Justin, might it be a good idea for probably the partners to hear from towns that have been recently successful, like the Berry projects, St. Albans projects, maybe hear firsthand from the folks that have been through the process, that have taken them not just one year, but 10, how you get through that difficult maze?
It's a great insight.
And maybe go to the partners first before they come here.
Yeah, and I would agree. Some of that is occurring. We were just talking today, we had our steering committee meeting for the partnership, and we were talking about having either Berry or someone from St. Albans come down and speak with the group as there's development happening in both of those communities. The other recent conversation was through our Workforce and Ed Subcommittee. We had Pat Molten Pauden from the Brattleboro Redevelopment Credit Corp. come over from Brattleboro and speak to us. So it is occurring, but I think you're right. Taking a lesson or a page out of somebody else's book is certainly...
Well, the downtown organizations are very much in touch on all that stuff. In fact, a lot of them look to Bennington for history on that, because of our downtown project was way ahead of a lot of the other ones, 20 years ago when we rejuvenated downtown.
And I think we're working a free trade zone still with Wyndham County.
Foreign trade zone.
Foreign trade zone, yeah. So, you know, we do have a partnership with our law towns and the communities and counties.
Great. If there's anything else, certainly let me know. Because you asked, you had asked for some of the different pieces that come through the downtown tax credit program. So I have some numbers that I'll send you by email, but I was able to pull this offline, and that just kind of shares a quick one sheet of the different incentive programs that come through the downtown designation program. And the most recent one we've had was a historic tax credit, which went to the Bennington Sports Center, which is in the downtown district. And that went to do some of the upgrades that they had to do to the facility.
Do we have a sheet like this for the Growth Center, same thing? Do we have something similar like this for the Growth Center designation?
I don't know if that, I pulled this off of the Agency for Commerce and Community Development. So I can look to see if...
Yeah, it does exist. We ought to get that to everybody also.
Okay.
That's great. Thanks.
Mike, on the first Monday, I guess, the first meeting that we have each month, could you present us with the, again, one business, five businesses, 10 businesses that you've talked to in the month previous, and whatever their outlandish request is? I don't care what it is, I just want to hear what their request is and why they're saying no.
Sure, yeah, I can put that in. If it occurs and through the course of what we're doing, I'll bring it to the group.
All right.
Good, thanks. And if you could get us an update on just some of the places you have been working with, two of the potential that are on our radar, that would be awesome also. I'd like to see some of that. Thanks.
I'll do that on a semi-regular basis, as we have the information.
And some of that is confidential, right?
Right, so it'll come in a confidential memo, so just absolutely know that. Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Bennington Housing Authority appointment. And the select board had a chance to interview a young lady earlier today. Do I have a nomination?
I'll make the motion to nominate Kristi Papoun to the Housing Authority open position.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on appointing Kristi to that position in the Housing Authority?
I was just impressed by her credentials.
I think she's going to be a great member.
I think, you know, if you get folks that are vested in the community like she is to come forward when an opening occurs on some of these boards and commissions, we can't go wrong.
Well, she's got both educational and practical experience to go in this position and do a great job, and very impressive.
And not to mention the energy.
Energy, for sure.
And enthusiasm for the work ahead, so I was happy to nominate her.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? And that is unanimous. And we want to thank Kristi for stepping forward to ask to be appointed to that board, very important board. Next item is the 2014 liquor and tobacco licenses.
Yes, I have one, a list of several renewals, and under the law now, we just signed the basic list, and I have one new license from Hennepin Supermarket and Pharmacy. That does require a signature on two different pages in the application, and I'll circulate those for signature.
Okay. What's new with that, Stuart?
I think it's just a new company providing the supply.
Okay. Okay, well, that's being circulated. A manager's report, Stuart? Okay, while that's being circulated, a manager's report, Stuart?
Yeah, a couple of things, and this is a signature page as well. Every year at this time, we, we sign our certificate of highway mileage. This year, the state has determined that we did add a small amount of mileage as it relates to the intersection of Benmont Avenue and Hunch Street. Apparently, they hadn't counted the, the little Y that takes you south and west. So we have added that to the application. This does require your signatures. Unfortunately, they only give you six signature lines, so if you can sign that for us.
What's the total mileage?
Total mileage, 127 and change.
Okay, and that's what, that's important to report to state for being eligible for their class two payment.
Yes, as the mileage increases, the amount of mileage money we get will increase slightly.
That's what we were talking about Saturday?
Yes. In your packet, you had a, an engineered sight distance calculation for Pageant Street. I haven't moved on this at this time, principally because it's winter and there's no parking on the street in the evening hours anyway. But we will most likely be placing no parking signs in the areas designated by the engineering design to eliminate the sight distance problem that you have at the top of that hill as you come over and press the button. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, make sure that you're aware of it, because, you know, someone might. The last thing I have, the packet that I handed to you when you arrived tonight, this is the fully prepared and adjusted budget based on our Saturday meeting. It shows all of the changes that were made. It tells us that the amount to be increased by taxes or the amount to be raised by taxes is $23,950, which is a very small amount. The one impact here that I think we need to talk about at some point, not necessarily tonight, I propose a solution to it. When we look at our expenditures, that's what the voters vote on. And the expenditure side of the budget is accurate and it's completed, as, as you have determined it to be. When we were talking about moving the Colville Road Bridge project forward, and you will see a report on that bridge in your packet as well, I miscalculated the impact on the amount to be raised by taxes. I thought it would reduce that significantly. It doesn't. But there are, as I have suggested, ways that we can look at those revenues when the time comes. The goal here, I think, in putting forward a budget is to sometimes estimate what its impact is on the taxing, the tax rate. And if, if the suggestion that we use some of the bridge reserves that we've been setting aside on the Colville Road Bridge project, we can reduce the highway fund increase to 1.3 cents. When coupled with a 1.1 cent increase in the general fund tax rate, we're looking at an overall tax rate increase of 2.45 cents. That's based on a level-funded grand list and based on all of the agencies being funded at last year's level. So there are liable to be some additional changes if agencies are petitioning, get on the ballot and get more money than they did last year. But that's, that's the remaining part that would impact the budget.
So which is suggesting is no action now or on the 27th, but when we get to set the tax rate, after we've seen what the schools' impact is on the taxpayers and ours, then we'll decide if we want to take some of this money that we've already got reserved to put in there?
No, I mean, my recommendation would be that we use it for discussion purposes, but not necessarily guarantee that we're going to use it. It does, it does make the overall budget very reasonable and very affordable, I think. And so we, we've accomplished what we set out to do, which was to present a budget and expenditures that continued to move its word from an infrastructure project perspective, but also did it in a way that minimized the, the impact on the tax rate itself.
Okay. Does everybody understand what the suggestion is?
And we could talk about this. If, if board members have additional questions, we can get together in an evening meeting, a quick evening meeting at the conference room to talk in more detail. But I, I felt that I needed to bring that to your attention, because it, it struck me when I got in this afternoon, that it hadn't done it as much as I hoped it would.
Okay. Anything else, Stuart?
I think that's it.
Okay, other business, Tom Jacobson. Greg?
Just one thing, well, we've got Robert Ebert here in the audience. I just wanted to point out that BTN put on a really nice presentation, and Robert was the catalyst behind that. It was the Christmas pageant that was over at the Old Castle Theater. And it was, I believe, a sold-out crowd, and it's the first time it's been done in the conversation of finding things that are uniquely Bennington. This is, it was a live radio show, it was a live show broadcast for the radio audience, and this could not have happened anywhere but in Bennington, Vermont. It was really, really well done. I don't know if you've heard it on the radio, but the people that were there were purely entertained. I'd love to hear what it sounded like on the radio, but it was really done, and really done well, and the initiative was, was greatly appreciated. So I want to thank Robert and the folks at BTN, and the Suites, and Old Castle Theater, and all those people that were involved in that.
Yeah, and if you ever get a call to be interviewed, Robert's a great interviewer. He does a great job on, on the radio. I've had the opportunity and pleasure of sitting down with him for an hour and then interviewing. It's one of the better, better interviewers that I've ever had to sit with, and it's a great job. Okay, John?
It's not true.
Justin?
I'm all set, Joe, thank you.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I've got to make a correction about something I said in our first budget meeting about what I believed at the time was a conflict of interest with respect to Chris Olden last year, when he advocated for increased funding for the homeless coalition. I thought, I broadly misinterpreted the statute to believe that if you sat out on the Select Board and you sat on another board, that that would be a conflict of interest, when in fact, what the statute does say is that if there is a personal economic interest, you have to recuse yourself. So I apologize to Chris, I was wrong.
Okay. Sharon?
No, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
And I have nothing else, so.
Joe? Do you want to mention that the February 10th board meeting will be the combined school boards, town, select board budget presentations?
Okay.